On April 18th, 2019. Could everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the high states of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Toscano.
Yes, sir.
Are there any changes to the executive agenda you wish to note?
There was just one, Mr. President, with respect to exception number three. In addition to the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, the board also discussed student discipline matters.
Thank you, Mr. Toscano. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 16th, 2019, regular meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Sean, could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Kauzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Astol.
Yes. Communications are on file in the office as the Board Secretary. Mr. Sampson, I'm going to yield the floor to you for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Astol. So we have a couple items on the agenda tonight aside from my report. And I'm going to open, we have Ms. Beth English here, and I'll call Beth up momentarily. So Beth is an English teacher at Freehold Township High School. She was named the Monmouth County Teacher of the Year this past, for this school year. So for those of you who don't know, I went through this previously, but so each, each school nominates a Teacher of the Year. And remember, there are 53 school districts in Monmouth County, so it's a large county comparatively. Those folks are then forwarded on to a committee at the county level, and they, they complete a pretty rigorous application with their, their teaching philosophy, sort of, you know, their most meaningful sorts of lessons, what's inspired them to be a teacher, how they think they would see their platform as, as a county Teacher of the Year, and how they would represent the, the state of New Jersey. Those folks are then, those applications are then scored and sort of ranked from a committee across the county, and then you, you funnel that down to about 15 or 20 individuals. Then they're double scored from there, and you look at, you know, sort of the, you know, who you think would best represent the county as Teacher of the Year. We were fortunate, the previous year, Mr. Todd Curtis had won it as County Teacher of the Year in Monmouth County, and so on the heels of that, I was very fearful that Beth might not win it, only because it, it was unheard of for a school district to have two in a row as the County Teacher of the Year. And I think the fact that Beth prevailed in that process speaks volumes to the strength of her candidacy for, for the role. And so in being named Monmouth County Teacher of the Year, Beth has a, 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 a very busy schedule, and, and she's out and about representing Monmouth County at a number of events across the state. But Beth has also taken it upon herself to create a number of internal platforms here in the school district to both sort of amplify the things that are happening in the school district, to feature teachers across the, the county, and what's inspired them. And she's been a terrific ambassador for Monmouth County. And so Beth, I'd like to call you up and just have you share some of your experiences with the board.
Thank you so much. I won't take that long, because it's been a lot, and I tend to be a talker, but it's okay. It's been a lot, yes. All right, so Monmouth County Teacher of the Year, in our first training, they said this is the year of yes. When they say Beth, would you like to, you just say yes. And I said, okay, I'm really good at that, so I'll make that work. This is our little alum, and I kind of feel like I got the green jacket to the club. Once you're in the club, you're always in the club, so it's kind of cool. I wish that happened in high school, but you know, I'll take it now. All right, so the beginning, we met in the NJ headquarters. This is before there was any formal announcement. It was not until August 14th that, for lack of a better term, rain begins, and the passing of the torch happens. So we did some media training, we took headshots, we set up our Twitter accounts, we set up our Monmouth County Facebook page, and it's kind of overwhelming, because I'm like, people aren't going to follow me, like, this isn't going to reach anything, you know. They're like, no, it's going to happen, you're going to be speaking, you know, get used to this. And just my past Throwback Thursdays reached 6,000 people. So I get a report all the time, so that was really exciting. They talked about some requirements and some of the parameters, and they started saying, you know, you should really think about your own personal platform. And this is where we met all the other county Teacher of the Years, and like seeing where their backgrounds were. And we have pre-K school, uh, schoolteachers, middle school, elementary, all the way to high school, so it's very interesting to see everyone's backgrounds. I did a speech at Monmouth University, that was one of my first ones, the MCA speech. And then I decided to join the subcommittee for elevating the profession. So we got to choose out of subcommittees, and I definitely chose that one, because that's definitely a passion for me. So then the celebration hit, and it's like, oh my gosh, the dip ball, thank goodness. So we were honored at the Freeholders, we went to the Sky Blue soccer game, the Trenton Thunder game. I almost had to throw out the first pitch. I was very nervous, but rain saved me. I was pretty sure I was going to throw a strike. And then we had the Department of Education, Governor Murphy and I are like best friends. He calls me, he tweets me out. He called to congratulate me in the middle of the class, which was really cool for my students to hear that. And I do truly feel like we're friends now. Department of Education follows me, there Cory Booker wrote to me, and I will be meeting him at a future event. So my platform is basically highlighting everything that's good in education. No one does this alone, and I definitely know that. I'm a team person, I was raised in team English, and I really just want to take this opportunity to give back and have a lot of gratitude. I've had a lot of mentors, and I'm so glad for the success I'm getting. But this didn't come as an individual achievement. This, I was placed with, in front of people and on a path that if I wasn't successful, it was on me. I had incredible mentors, and that really started not only in my experience as a player, as a student, but then, you know, 21, fresh, right out of college, Freehold Township was my first job. And I've been there for 19 years, and I take a lot of pride in that. I really love that. My platform promoting STHS, Freehold Township, we do Township Tuesdays, and then we do the regional on Wednesdays. And I've only been able to get to two different schools so far, Coltsneck and Howell, and I'm just blown away and amazed by how one great we are, and how each school really has their own spin on things. So it's very easy to have tunnel vision and, you know, just E103 summer reading essays. So this really has expanded, you know, my mindset professionally, and a new sense of pride, not only in our county, but our district. Promoting Monmouth County's school spirit, and now our whole cohorts is lifting our voice, so giving everyone a little profession. So we had our first retreat this weekend at the Chauncey Hotel in Princeton, and it was amazing.
Rough gig, Beth.
It was, it was good. But, you know, we were speaking on connection, teacher leadership, and a lot of times I don't have time to really reflect on that. We talked about teacher leadership, the how, the what, and the why for four hours. And it was just amazing to really define it and go through it. It was just amazing. Running around, so for the convention, I'll be running an Ed Camp discussion. I'm also on the subcommittee for public speaking. They, they pushed me into that. And we will be talking about teacher leadership, mindful and wellness, which is the push, obviously, for Monmouth County through our executive board. And at the roundtable discussions at the convention, I will be talking about connecting with students outside of classrooms through activities and sports, and connecting with the staff as a whole, and tightening school culture. And then networking and the possibilities, it's just great. I'll be doing school visits, I've already done speeches, and, you know, I'll be able to be on subcommittees, which is unbelievable. So next month, I will be sitting in Trenton discussing and giving feedback to NJ Chief, and how they're going to be, any suggestions to implementing. I have a lot of questions for them, I don't want them to answer. I'll be starting a podcast with our State Teacher of the Year, and trying to get as many stories as we can. I'm trying to get as many classroom close-ups through the NJ for our district, not just township, because that's what we hope to promote, the more we get out there with them. I'll be ready for the NJ review. But just from August till now, we are the best district. But it's not even close, it's not even close, and I'm not just saying that.
That's correct.
In terms of, in terms of education, comprehensive education, so many opportunities, no one touches us. And, you know, it's that one day, I'm like, oh, yep, Freehold Regional, no, but it's, like, that's how I kind of feel now. And I always used to kind of say, and I'll admit this, like, oh, Freehold Township, Freehold Township, and that's totally become a Freehold Regional, Freehold Regional. And I'm so impressed with what we do here, I'm impressed with our leaders, and I'm impressed with our schools. So I just am so proud to represent us, and this is just the beginning. And I just wanted to thank you so much, and I mean, for everyone's support, for, for, you know, administration, all their schools in the district, across the board, everybody has been awesome, so thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thanks, Beth, and thanks for coming out. And I just thought it was important for the board and public to know, you know, all the work that goes into truly representing the county like Beth has, has taken upon herself. And it would be one thing, she could receive the accolade and be happy with the plaque and say, yeah, I did this, I did that, but she's really trying to lift others in her journey, and I think that that's really what it's all about in public education. And I think that she's a terrific representation of the county and the state, so thanks, Beth.
Beth, I'd like to thank you. During the awards ceremony, the auditorium is filled with kids, and I like to remind everybody or state that it shouldn't be any surprise that I never won an award or a green jacket in my life for anything that I ever did. And, you know, I am deeply affected by that, so congratulations, it makes a, a big difference, and, and I'm very proud of what you did. Thank you so much, and it was a great presentation you gave.
So next on the agenda, we have Mr. Bruce Hennecker, Director of Planning, Research, and Evaluation, and Dr. Nicole Hazel, who are going to do the annual assessment report for 2018, 2019.
So we're going to segue right in. This is Mr. Bruce Hennecker. He's our new Director for Planning, Research, and Evaluation, collectively with our team at Central Office and with Dr. Sampson. We spent a good amount of time going through all of our data here in the district. Tonight's presentation is focusing in on the spring 2019 results. We are going to go through the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which is formerly PARC, but we had our first administration this spring. We are also going to share with you our Dynamic Learning Map, DLM results, and that's for our special education students, and also the WEDA access results, and that's for our English language learners. So, you know, again, we have comprehensive, you know, assessment and testing through the Department of Education, as well as other metrics for various groups of students. So I'll step you through just a couple of pieces. As you all know, last school year in October of 18, New Jersey officially moved away from PARC. It is now replaced with the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, and that's in English Language Arts and Mathematics. These statewide assessments are really here to measure students' progress, you know, in those two areas, mathematics and English Language Arts, and really looking at college and career readiness. Also, one other change to the assessment, they reduced the time by 90 minutes in both areas. It went from three sections to two sections. So we think that's, you know, we think that's a plus, you know, for our students, so they're not so heavily entrenched, you know, at the time of state testing with such a long assessment. So we thought that was a positive. There are still three pathways for graduation. The two assessments in the first pathway is ELA 10 and Algebra 1. Just like we have seen in the past with PARC, the state does have a second pathway where there are multiple, there's a menu of assessments, and Mr. Hennecker is going to go through those multitude and that menu of assessments that students can utilize for proficiency. There are alternate assessments, ACT, PSAT, et cetera. And then there's also a third pathway, if there is a student who is not meeting proficiency through the state assessment or one of the alternate assessments, there is a process, a portfolio, that students can engage in both in Language Arts and in Math. And, you know, in our district, that is a very, very small number, either through the first pathway or the second pathway, we are capturing, you know, all of our students.
That's a good question.
Sure.
On the second pathway, what were the tests that made the second one?
We're going to go through that. We're going to go through, there's a, a menu of those, so Mr. Hennecker has that on, on a particular slide, we'll go through that.
Dr. Hazel, could I ask a question as well? On the previous slide, it said that 10th grade, or excuse me, 11th graders, there's an arrangement that are no longer required to take it. Is that as a graduation requirement? Is that what the?
Yes, so the, the two tests are ELA 10 and Algebra 1. In order to engage in that second pathway, there is a requirement that we are still taking ELA 9. Again, depending on how the student fares, then, you know, determinations are made, you know, for ELA 11.
So that's, that's separate and apart from the, the one, as I understand it from going back, one piece was as a graduation requirement, and then there was a participation rate across all grades.
That is correct. We still have to.
For funding purposes.
So, yep, ESEA still requires us to engage in those assessments. For the first pathway, it's ELA 10 and Algebra 1, but yes, we have to engage in all of the assessments.
Thank you.
So for college and career readiness, you know, our work here at the district is to ensure that we have, you know, a rigorous curriculum across all of our subject areas for all students. We work very closely, I think, Ms. English, you know, in talking about our district, we really have a very strong professional development program for teachers. Our focus is really on standards-aligned planning and standards-aligned instruction. Today was actually our full-day PD day for teachers, where teachers were able to work together collaboratively in like courses that they teach, to plan multiple sessions in lesson design, really looking at their formative assessment and assessments in the class as they are planning out their lessons for the students. We take great pride in our curriculum writing processes and our program planning processes, again, ensuring that all students are college and career ready, not just for an assessment that they are ready to take on the next stage in their life upon graduation, whether that would be a four-year college, a two-year college, community college, or a career or Specifically for students, you know, we do have a number of interventions. Our district this week, students in grades nine, 10, and 11 will be taking the PSAT, PSAT 8, 9 for ninth graders, PSAT for grades 10 and 11. Again, we want to have, you know, integrated, you know, both formative and summative assessments for our students. We want multiple measures to be able to assess, you know, their progress. We have targeted interventions right within our classrooms. We have Title I programs and supports for students in Freehold Township and Freehold High School, our two Title I schools, and after-school tutoring available for students when there's an identified need for additional support. You know, as an aside, we revamped all of our guidance websites, and we do have available through the Guidance Department, all of the days that after-school tutoring is available for students at each of the high schools. Also, for students who are identified that need additional support, you know, it was important for us to run workshop classes, so we would have concurrent supports in both Algebra 1 and ELA 9. We are in the process of looking at those state graduation requirements and potentially making some changes to where those workshop classes would be positioned, so we are in alignment with their, all of their assessments. You'll see as we go through, we're going to start, Mr. Hennecker is going to go through the results for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, but you'll see, and many of you have, if you have children, you've seen the score reports, you know, they are from a level one to a level five. Level four and beyond, where you have met and exceeded grade level expectations. We're going to step through that. It's, it's very interesting, and Mr. Messinger had referred to looking at those pathways, but in geometry and Algebra 2, for the state graduation requirement, the cut score is lower at 725. So for this presentation, we thought it was very important to share, you know, with you and, you know, how our students fared, even for some that have the three, which is acceptable through the second pathway for students in geometry and Algebra 2. So you can queue into that. And also, we'll be sharing with you WEDA access results. That is a computer adaptive test that the ELL, English Language Learner students take. That's a program at Coltsneck High School. They take that assessment in all grade levels. That's in reading, writing, listening, and speaking, those are the domains that are tested. And then the DLM Dynamic Learning Maps for students with intellectual disabilities. They have a test in grade 11 in Language Arts, Math, and also in Science. So we're going to share those results with you, and then, you know, at the conclusion, if there's any questions, we'll take questions, you know, from the board and, you know, our community. Want to go?
Sure.
Okay, to start off, I'm going to provide a little bit more of this presentation, some contextual data that shows comparisons between the district and state. So for now, just go through the proficiency levels of students. So for ELA 09, you can see that our proficiency rate was at 61.3%. For ELA 10, the proficiency rate was at 58%. For Algebra 1, proficiency rate was at 32.1%. For geometry, we have a proficiency rate at 30.2%, but we do want to note over here with students meeting graduation pathway for the second option, we had 73% meet that graduation criteria. Then for Algebra 2, we had a 50.9% proficiency rate, and then also a 73% of those students likewise met the second pathway to graduation. And here, these charts is showing a visual of the different proficiency levels, one through five. The numbers in the bars indicate the count of students, and that is roughly the percentage of where these students fell in each of those bands. So what we can see with level, the first assessment, ELA 09, we can see that as a district, we outpaced the state by approximately 6%. Then if we look down here at English 10, ELA 10, we outpaced the state by roughly 4.5%. With Algebra 1, we fell behind the state by approximately 10%. With geometry, we were neck and neck with the state. And then finally, with Algebra 2, we can see that we outpaced the state by a little over 5%. Next up, we're going to review some of the access for Ls performance data. For this, they break up the student performance into proficiency levels. So for example, here we can see the, most students wind up in the developing area. To consider, be considered exiting from EL status, one of the factors is getting to a 4.5 proficiency level. So this is our overall performance band breakdown for all grade levels. And then we can see with, when we break it down by grade, it falls into a very similar pattern, right? Most of our students are in that developing area, and then going up down through the other ranges. Next, we have the Dynamic Portraits. Again, Portraits requires that all students regardless have to take an assessment of advanced science in ELA at least once in high school, so we have results for any of those. These also have proficiency bands that are kind of similar. And so what we'll be looking at is that the students that are at target can advance. We have some comparative data, the 2018 results did not come out of the state yet, so I'm relying on the 17 for comparison purposes. So we can see for grade 11, with ELA, we had 71% of our students at target or above compared to the state with 32%. And with mathematics, we see that we were 18% compared to the state with 32%. And finally, science, there is no comparative data yet, but we have a 90% of students at target or above. So finally, what we do have here is the graduation pathways. So when I was referencing the geometry and the Algebra 2, that falls into the second pathway. There is the litany of assessments that are available for students to take to meet that graduation pathway before after the result revert to the third pathway, which would be a portfolio of the year. So there are numerous opportunities for students to meet graduation requirement. Ideally, we would like students to be through the first pathway, but short of that, we have numerous options available for our students. Coming up, here's just a quick reminder about some of our test dates. We do have a full testing calendar and information for parents available on our website, the link provided. Any questions?
Dr. Hazel?
Yeah.
Hello. How are you? So this is much different. This seems a lot different than the old, the old PARC. Are you all happy? I mean, I feel there'll be more changes in it, but this is good, right?
I think we're removed in a positive direction. You know, still, you know, right now, that first pathway is ELA 10 and Algebra 1, but, you know, still required to take, you know, the other assessments. So, you know, you're right, ESEA, you know, requires that one test in 11th grade, New Jersey is exceeding that. And, you know, that's where it gets a little sketchy for us.
Here, can I chime in? The, so what's happened, Pete, is that the, the, the State Department of Education put forth a proposal to move to just the ELA 10 and Algebra 1 as the graduation requirements to go to one test. Two weeks ago, the State Board tabled that, and the State Board is split in their membership in terms of, there are some folks on the board that believe that you should reduce the number of tests for a graduation requirement, but there are also a number of State Board members who believe we should continue to test at that very same rate at the high school level that we have tested under both PARC and now NJSLA. That political battle is sort of unfolding as we speak. There was a waiver granted to the state of New Jersey to find a, create a, 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 a new graduation requirement there, in the throes of that now. What that ultimately ends up looking like, I'm, I'm not certain. I think from our administrative standpoint, we've been clear that we believe strongly that you can reduce those high school assessments, and have advocated as such, but that is not what has happened yet in terms of having a sit for those assessments, and... And Bruce did an interesting analysis for me. One of the things that we looked at, because we're, we're here and we're in the, we're in the tough position of assessments not necessarily counting, quote unquote, but also ensuring that students are giving their best effort so we can get a general gauge of how well they are or aren't performing and identify gaps. And that's one of the reasons we really emphasized the PSAT data over the past couple of years, because it's much cleaner data for us. But, but the, the time on task on some of the assessments, there's a noticeable difference in student scores depending on how much time on task they spent on the, on the question. And we could, we could get at that, and what that told us was that we tended to do very well when kids gave effort, and the effort was something that we could question. I do think that there, regardless of, of time on task, effort, there are certainly things that we can draw out of there that, that we want to make sure that we, our, our students are meeting those standards more effectively. I'm not sure, actually, I am sure that testing the bejesus out of them isn't the way to pull that out.
It's 90 minutes less.
Right, and they, they did, they did reduce the time of the test itself. And so we have made some positive strides, as far as we see it, the past couple of years, but there is, there's a lot at stake at the State Board of Ed presently, and there may be, that's not determined.
What would you pull out of that? I mean, we're good in language arts. We're high in language arts, we're like 78%. But Algebra 1, it were weaker?
And again, Algebra 1, you know, many of the students are taking Algebra 1 in 7th and 8th grade. Right. So a good percentage of our students are not taking Algebra 1 with us. They come in and, you know, they're taking Geometry.
So what, what we, what we criticized with that, with the state and with the DOE is as a high school regional district, we're in a unique position. If we were a K-12, if our advanced students in mathematics in Grade 8, we would own all of those test scores as well. What ends up happening is all of your advanced students that took that assessment prior to coming to the high school, they don't fall in your Algebra 1 scores. And so our scores tend to be a little bit lower because of that, but that doesn't mean that, you know, like we have, our responsibility is to make sure that those test scores are always good regardless. It's just a reality of being a high school regional that we, and then CUSAC is something that comes into play with that, and that's one of the things that we, you know, we sort of complained about to the state.
I didn't think they were going to test the freshmen anymore. They're still testing the freshmen? They're still testing freshmen?
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody still has to take these assessments.
Dr. Sampson, can I just, I just want to make sure I understand what you just said. So you're referring to students who are taking the course Algebra 1 in 7th or 8th grade? And does that mean that they are also being, they're taking this assessment at the 7th or 8th grade, whatever level?
Correct.
Okay, so those, those results are not porting over to us because they're not taking?
Correct.
Okay, so then, so then when they come to us, they don't have, they don't have to sit for those tests again? Even though they're offered, are they sitting for something else that's offered those?
If they're in Geometry, then they're taking the Geometry assessment. If they're in Algebra 2, they're taking the Algebra 2 assessment.
So then, so then for a 9th grade student who, just the traditional track, they're taking the ELA 9 and the, and then Algebra?
Algebra 1, if they're in the Algebra 1 course.
So if they're taking Geometry that year, then they're not, and did we, are we changing the, the, what's the?
Yeah, we're, we're moving the Geometry first in the math sequence to bookend Algebra 1 and Algebra 2 together. You know, because we think that that, putting those, those two courses together are actually going to assist our students for those gateway assessments.
Okay, so then that's just, all that's going to change is just which assessments are offered when?
Right.
Correct.
So they would be, right, so they would be taking their Algebra as a sophomore.
It's not, not complicated in the least.
No.
Sarcasm inserted.
Are you mocking me, sir?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm being sarcastic. It's very difficult for me to get your hands around.
I'm so happy, I'm so happy you got the 90 minutes.
But then your 7th and 8th graders that are taking the Algebra 1, then have a gap. They're not in sequence, because now they're going to take Geometry as a freshman, because everybody's taking as a freshman, and then they're going to take Algebra 2 as a sophomore. So then they have a break in the sequence.
They've always had a break in the sequence.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the norm now, we're, we're moving it, but they've always had the break.
And they're more advanced students. We don't, you know, bookending that Algebra content is going to be beneficial for the majority of students.
Can I ask a little bit more about the test? Well, first of all, because the last thing that I remember was something was declared unconstitutional. Mr. Tusk, I don't know if it was the test or the graduation requirement. And I was going back several months ago, I don't know if they declared Park unconstitutional.
Wasn't it, there, just answer that, there was no judicial finding that it was unconstitutional. There is the requirement in the federal law that there be some state assessment. There was a lot of politicking, both in the gubernatorial election about Park and how that was to be addressed, but.
Well, the State DOE settled with the ELC.
Yes.
The ELC brought the suit in.
The Education Law Center, yes.
Okay.
They did, when there was the attempted move to make it the only path to graduation, it was settled in that respect, yes. Yeah, but the test itself wasn't declared unconstitutional.
So are these, are the assessments that are, you know, being administered at the SLA, are they substantively different than the Park? Or is it just, besides the 90 minutes, I get that that is a good thing?
No, not, 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 it's, it's probably, it's the same basic test bank. Correct.
But a reduction in time on this test.
Do you see any changes at all, Coach?
I mean, this was our, you know, first administration.
You won't know anything till.
No. We're assessing the assessment on standards. And I don't think there was much change in terms of the actual test, except timing from Park to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. And where it goes from here, we still don't know.
And then, so to answer my, the question I opened up with, a student who, let's just say, takes that first track passes, you know, meets or exceeds the standards for the, for the 10, ELA 10 and Algebra 1, as far as a graduation requirement, they've completed the graduation requirements, but continued testing is still required in 11th grade? Because you, I thought you said there's no more testing in 11th grade.
Not really in 11th grade. Once you've got those two, you're fine.
And what is the science test? Is it still that state biology?
There is a science assessment in May for all the students.
It's not the 9th?
No, it's comprehensive.
That's, that's, that's new. It had been the biology assessment is what you're speaking to, and they changed that to a comprehensive science assessment.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Hazel, thank you, Mr. Henneker.
Thank you very much.
Just a couple more quick updates from my end. Just in terms of the ongoing work around ensuring excellence, the bond referendum that we've put before the voters on November 5th. We've continued to access a number of different avenues in order to publicize that so folks can make an informed decision on Election Day. To date, we've met with approximately 80 to 90 different groups and, and community organizations and the such in order to just answer questions, provide an overview. We've provided a pretty comprehensive overview to all of our municipal officials and other community groups. We've met with all of our K-8 PTOs to explain the process, a number of senior centers and the such, and another, other community areas. We've created a couple videos at this point in time, trying to explain the referendum in, in, in as, as simplistic a way as possible so that everybody can understand what the key takeaways are for the three questions. We've inundated all social media platforms, whether it's Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. We've, we've, we've rolled that out. There are a number of lawn signs out and about in larger geographic footprint here, and we will continue to put information out up until Election Day. We've also tapped into alumni for absentee ballots and the such, and made sure that we've been clear about that process. Feel very good about the information that we put forth. Feel good about who we've met with and will continue to do that, but we have, at this point in time, it's been nonstop, full go, getting out and about and making sure that we're having conversations with the larger community so the folks understand clearly. And one of the points that we've been clear to make, the, the bond referendum, ensuring excellence, has, does not have a tax impact in and of itself. The debt is coming off of the construction of Coltsneck High School. We are repurposing 2/3 of that debt to do the bond referendum and giving a third back in tax relief. However, you know, that, we, we, what, folks' taxes are still going to go up, whether it's from the municipality, the school tax, what, we're separate from that. The referendum itself, though, has no tax impact. And I want to make sure that the public understands that, and we've been clear to make that distinction, because I don't want folks to think that we've, we've said something that isn't, isn't true. We've also created a very detailed mailing that has been sent to every registered voter in the geographic footprint, and I think it, it explains the three questions in simple language and what's put forth. And I'm going to say it again, in the context of a $31 million state aid reduction, the referendum is critical, there's $42 million of work within that referendum. The, the components of that referendum that identified paving and roofing and, and things of that nature, you know, we broke that work into three categories, and we're only targeting category 1 work in the referendum. So there's a lot more that's outside of the scope of the referendum as well. It is not a fix for the $31 million reduction, but it is certainly something that would contribute to alleviating the difficulties of dealing with that $31 million reduction. I'm sending out a mailing to the larger community and a voice message later this week that articulates and firmly entwines ensuring excellence with $31 million reduction. I would again just ask the general public to educate themselves about the impact of S2 to this school district and to reach out to their local elected officials who supported S2 and who continue to support S2 with the difficulties of this, that this district is going to face for a school system here that is already regionalized, that educates students for $3,500 a person, less than the state average, that has class sizes of 30 and 31 and 32 in our core classes presently. A $31 million reduction is going to be devastating to this school system. And I've particularly sent that message to our K-8 partners, because the students who are within our system today, they may not feel the full impact of that just over the next year or two years, but it's coming. The students who are coming into our system will certainly feel that impact. There is no way we will continue to deliver the program that Ms. English spoke so articulately about in terms of comparatively to other, other districts. We do it at a bargain now, we do it at incredible financial efficiency. One of the best statistics I think we've ever shared was when Mr. Boyce used what it cost us per point on a state assessment per pupil versus other districts. And I think the community was able to really see the return on investment in that, in that, in that presentation several years ago. And it, we are in a difficult position. It is going to get more difficult here. Our elected officials need to understand that, particularly folks that represent our school communities. And I'm not a politician, but I am going to be as political as I need to be to get the word out about what's going to happen to this school system, because $31 million is unfathomable on a $200 million budget.
Okay, Dr. Sampson, there's a couple of things I wanted to say about these issues. And you had just talked about S2 and talking about the politicians that actually supported the cuts to Freehold Regional. And obviously, we have three different legislative teams that cover our district. And the people to call out, or that I want to personally call out, is the 11th District. So if you look at Coltsneck, Freehold Borough, and Freehold Township, that's the 11th District. And the other reason I say it is because today, in today's Asbury Park press, the two assembling people from the 11th District, Hoteling and Downey, actually were in favor of S2 and the cuts, which I find appalling that you could actually come out in the paper in support of this. And I can't remember which one, but one of them was actually quoted as saying is, like, he didn't mention Freehold Region in particular, but he said districts have been getting too much money all along and wasted it, basically. I mean, so I just think people in Coltsneck, Freehold Borough, and Township really, you know, need to call them up, and that's the one where Vin Gopal is the state senator, so.
Yeah, I, so we've reached out to all of our elected officials and, and, you know, it, it's a difficult position, because some of our K-8 partners, Freehold Borough in particular, was underfunded for years, and I understand that. The larger funding argument, we would argue, is, is, is built on a false premise, because the determination of local fair share is something that our state law, our lawsuit against the state has gotten at. You know, we, we feel that that is incredibly not aligned to what the community's ability to pay is, based on how it's determined. And, you know, we refer to the funding formula and the multipliers that drive it as the secret sauce in terms of like what a community's local fair share is, and have pointed out, you know, the, the political argument is there's districts that have been living high on the hog and they should have done better with their money while they had it. This is not the reality. The reality for us is that there's been a sharp and artificial inflation of what it's been determined that we can pay that is not aligned to the growth in our property wealth. And in that gap is where the reduction has come. And, and, and that's a difficult position for us to be in, but the, the larger difficulty there is in the general public. There are probably five people in the entire state that actually understand the funding formula. And so when you're making an argument, overfunded, underfunded, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a simplistic argument that, that really masks a real complex and nuanced formula for each and every district that has their own story. And for us, our story is that we are, we, we have an economy of scale with a regionalized system. We have an efficient school system that's able to deliver a quality education to students at low cost comparatively. And so we're, we're an outlier when it comes to that. And then we've made the argument and have testified, I said before, you know, the Senate Ed Committee, the Assembly Ed Committee, the Legislature, we've provided briefing packets to all of our elected officials. And one of the other difficult elements that Freehold Regional High School District faces is we have so many different representatives because we, we touch so many communities. And so it's not like we go to one person and say, you have to help us when, when we're dealing with our state senators, we're dealing with three different state senators. When we deal with our assembly folk, we're dealing with multiple assembly folk. And what I would posit is, I'm not, I don't, I don't believe that it was any legislative intent to educate one child at the expense of another in this state. And that's what's happened as a result of the funding formula. What happened during the, the years where it was not funded was also wrong. There were districts that had exploding populations that got no additional aid for years. And those school systems deserve to be funded. It should not come at the cost of another district that is doing it incredibly efficiently and in a way that's now going to do the exact same thing to those districts that just happened to the underfunded districts, except it's just going to be flopped to other districts. If New Jersey wants to, which last I checked was just ranked either number 1 or 2 in every poll of public education. in every poll of public education, if that's how we're going to fund our school systems as we move forward, that's going to have disastrous consequences for kids and communities. And what I would say to folks is that Sean and I have made ourselves available to sit down with our numbers, to sit down with our questions of the funding formula itself, and to, and to talk about how it does not accurately represent what we should be paying. And that's the biggest crux, you know, that's the difficulty. And so, but it's a very complex process, and so to, to have that argument with individuals who simply say, you're overfunded, well, we were dramatically underfunded in 2012, 2013, and then overnight, when the formula changed, we were suddenly overfunded. So, so that's the, that's what we, that's what we point to, and we point to the numbers that back that up. What we've asked is that legislatively, they take a pause, they take a look at the impact of S2, they stop harm from happening to districts, because there are a number of districts over the next year or two that are going to certainly fall off a precipitous cliff financially, and rather than have that happen, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we pause that impact before we fully understand it? Because I'm not certain that folks that always supported S2 fully understand the significance of the long-term financial impact of what is going to occur as a result of it for a number of districts.
Do you think they could keep the funding as is? Has anybody said, let's delete it one more year? Give it a pause, keep the funding the same?
So I, I would argue that, I don't think any new program should be funded when districts are being dismantled, and that you, you could preserve districts that way. I would argue that you don't need to put money into horse racing and not into our children. I would argue that there's probably different avenues to, to, to secure some additional funding. I don't, I, I truly don't think that people understand the magnitude of the impact of what those, the scope of those reductions are going to be for us. And I can't, I'm speaking for Freehold Regional High School District in our financial situation, but the argument that anyone's lived high on the hog here is a false, is a false argument. Sean, I don't know if you, if I missed anything.
I think that an important takeaway from this conversation is that S2 is independently a path that is going to jeopardize opportunity for our students, and it is a path that we're going to travel down, but it's independent of the referendum. If the referendum, the capital referendum is unsuccessful, that amplifies the problem. So a successful referendum does not solve the problem, it's a two-independent situations. But without the community's support of the capital referendum on November 5th, many of those things contained in the question need to be done regardless, and that just puts additional pressure on our financial situation. So, I think that's an important takeaway for today.
Yeah, and, and just one final point on that. You know, when we went out with the, with the referendum in March, we were very careful not to tie the state aid reduction to the referendum at that time, because the, the scope of the state aid reduction was unfair, was unknown, and we felt that that would be unfair to our public, not going to threaten our public, oh my gosh, if this doesn't happen, then this happens. Once the, once the scale of the state aid reduction became clear and, 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 and was formalized, that's when we, we had no other choice but to link the two, and that, and that's what we've done this time around. But in March, we deliberately did not do that, because the state aid reduction was an unknown at that point in time. Thank you.
If, if I can add one thing very, very quickly, I don't think anybody on the board knows this, but initially, I was trained as an economist, and I worked as an economist, not for a long, probably for a one-year period, and I did an intensive amount of research prior to moving out to Monmouth County, and in particular, Freehold Regional, and I found Freehold Regional to be the best buy in, in schools for public school, because I thought it was important that my son goes to public schools. Well, fast forward, he did very well in public schools, I couldn't be more satisfied, especially with the, the K-8 that he went to, and what happens is, if this goes through the way it looks to be, it could go through, I can't even say it properly, the house values are going to fall. That's pure economics. Our home values are going to fall. And if anybody thinks that we don't need the extra money, just take a look walking through Colts Neck's high school parking lot and sidewalk, and tell me that that doesn't need to be replaced. Everybody thinks Colts Neck's a new school. It's not a new school. These things have a particular lifespan, and we have the best buy right now in public education. I would love to see it continue that way, and all the support everybody could give is so much appreciated. Can we move forward then?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Normally, we have board reports, which are curriculum and instruction, finance and policy committee. We don't have any tonight. We have no public participation tonight that Charlie has brought up to me. So, at that point, Mr. Boyce, are there any changes to the agenda that you wish to note?
Just, there's an addendum, it's on the back table, it's also been provided to every board member, it's an addition to G7 and also one to J3, so the agenda has amended.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve items G1 through K1?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have to abstain from G13.
And I'm going to exchange, abstain from K1, it's the conference in Atlantic City that I'll be going to, so I'm not voting on it.
And K1 also, I have to take a class in Atlantic City that one day, so I abstain from myself. And Dr. Sampson, school boards, and Dr. Hazel, February 13th, professional development workshop.
Sorry, Mr. Bruno, what's that first?
G13. Seeker's contract?
Okay, roll call, Mr. Bruno with noted abstentions. Yes or no?
Yes, abstain.
Yes.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes on everything except G13, which I abstain, and K1, that has my name, Dr. Nicole's name, and Mr. Dr. Sampson's name. I abstain on those, everything else is yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yeah.
Mr. Acetola?
I'm voting yes for everything, except I'm abstaining from K1.
Okay. Okay, any old business?
I just wanted to say, with the Seeker's contract, I wasn't involved with it, because I'm a conflicted board member, but they're work, they're hard workers, and 20 years, I was an athletic director in the Seeker's, so I do feel your pain, and I wish you all the best of luck to the Seeker's. I still feel your pain, I've been gone for six years.
New business? Any, any board members wishing to discuss new business?
I'd like to discuss something briefly.
Sure.
I'd like to discuss briefly vaping. I watch, I know how seriously we take this issue in this district and the health and safety of our students. I was watching a news report, a local news report, the other day, and a young lady from, in her early twenties, from one of our participating towns, apparently was at some forum or some, you know, convention, some discussion on the topic, and she had just been released from Jersey Shore Hospital, their trauma center, I assume, and she described her situation, her, her, seems like a near-death situation, but what really struck me was how she said the physicians told her she suffered a chemical burn to her lungs, and maybe that's been said before, and I didn't hear it, or it just didn't ring hot and ring true to me until I heard that young woman say that. And so, in light of all of that, I was, I'd like to ask the board, through the board president, if perhaps at the next scheduled policy committee meeting, we could have the, and I may not be on the board at that time, so I'll take the "we" out, but have the policy that deals with vaping, I think it's under, more in line with tobacco usage and that sort of thing, as opposed to maybe another policy that has deeper consequences, not to punish students or anything like that, but just to express how serious it is, and that these are emergent, urgent, you know, life and death situations that they're exposing themselves to, so maybe more interventions for someone who's, who we discover is vaping either on a property or at an event or something like that, so that they can get more intense education and intervention. So, I'd just like, in a very long-winded way, to ask if we could have that brought to the policy committee for review and input and possible revision.
Amy, I think that that's a new, relevant item that should be addressed, and I have no problem with it at all. Does anybody on the board have any problem in addressing that? So we will do that at the next policy meeting.
Just related, if you remember last year when we were talking about legalization of recreational marijuana?
Yeah.
I still think it's hysterical that every politician under the sun now is so concerned about vaping, but still pushing recreational marijuana use. Like, these people are crazy.
About a year ago.
Like, they're so concerned about it.
A lot of tax dollars, Mike, you know, and it's unfortunate.
Like, it's okay.
Yeah, like the one or two we're talking about now, next year could be 12, 14, 15. It could be 20, it's, yeah, it's nuts.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Everybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.